Mayor Campesano unfortunately is running a little bit late tonight. So I'll start the meeting by calling us to order to begin and then ask everybody to rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. May have a seat. Madam Secretary, could you kindly call the roll?
President Hoover.
Present.
Ms. Byrne.
Here.
Ms. English.
Here.
Mr. Holt. Do we have Mr. Holt?
I don't see him.
Ms. James.
Here.
Mr. Schley.
Present.
Ms. Taylor. She looks.
I saw her.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Campesano was expected.
Yes. Hey, if you could, please take a look at the agenda. There's one item under new business I'd like to add. It's an item that was in the email, which is the upcoming, excuse me, the upcoming food drive on Saturday. I just want to make sure that's under new business. So as amended, I would take a motion to approve the agenda unless there are any other additions.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second Angela.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we do have the agenda approved. We'll move on then to minutes. The minutes were circulated to everybody by Madam Secretary Henry. So I'd take a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th meeting of Borough Council.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes of the May 22nd meeting of Borough Council. At this moment, I'm just going to move forward from announcements and presentations from Mayor Campesano. And with the understanding that we'll allow him that space when, if, and when he comes in. So with that said, we'll move on to the treasures report for Mr. Tataro. Mr. Tataro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I will review the treasures report for the five months ended May 31st, 2020. Beginning in January 1, 2020, the general fund had a beginning balance of $793,851. Year-to-date receipts is $5,963,405. Year-to-date dispersments. Year-to-date dispersments of $2,972,231. For a surplus of $2,991,174. And an ending balance of $3,785,025. The sewer fund has a beginning balance of $1,192,271. Year-to-date receipts of $1,297,240. Year-to-date dispersment of $577,93. For a surplus of $720,146. An ending balance in the sewer fund of $1,912,417. Liquid fuels fund had a beginning balance of $789,699. Year-to-date receipts of $281,067. Dispersments of $8,393. And for a surplus of $272,674. An ending balance of $1,062,373. Non-uniform pension fund had a beginning balance, $3,549,495. Year-to-date receipts and investment gains, losses of negative $183,34. Year-to-date dispersments of $59,714. For a deficit of $242,748. An ending balance of $3,306,747. Police pension fund, beginning balance of $10,301,696. Year-to-date receipts, investment gains, losses of minus $895,612. Year-to-date dispersments of $329,494. For a deficit of $1,225,106. And an ending balance of $9,076,590. For all funds, beginning balance is $16,627,012. Year-to-date receipts of $6,463,65. Dispersments of $3,946,925. For a deficit, I'm sorry, for a surplus of $2,516,140. An ending balance of May 31st, 2020, for all funds, of $19,143,152. That is the treasures report for all funds for the five months 2020, ending May 31st.
Okay, do we have any questions for the treasurer, for the report? I guess I'll ask the question that might be on many of our minds is the, looking at the police pension fund, we're still with the deficits in the non-uniform pension fund. Has there been any discussion with our pension funds about recalibrating or how we foresee that change in the future?
So for the pension funds, you know, we're basically stay the course. We leave it to they as the experts to increase or decrease risk. And we have seen them track at or just below some of the recovery that the stock market has seen lately. But other than that, we have not communicated with them since the last finance committee meeting. The next time we will do so is likely the August meeting of the finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Questions? Thank you. Chair acknowledges Councilmember Taylor.
So the fund is usually just managed and predicated on the stock. We don't usually go in and adjust or do anything unless there's something out of the ordinary. I remember I'm still trying to catch up with everything, but it seems to me like the pension would be reliant on the stock market and they would manage the changes, not us, unless what?
Yeah, so ultimately, we could make a suggestion or recommendation to them. And responsibility ultimately is on the pension committee, which is the members of the finance committee. One thing that we can change are the assumptions that we make. We make a assumption of a seven and a half percent gain each year in the investment. So we could change as a matter of policy and there are implications for that. And we can talk about that and that's kind of complicated. But yeah, that's the expectation that we've set for as a policy are the mix of funds in conjunction with our expected return that is used to then compute a lot that goes behind that. So those two things, 70/30 of mix of stocks and bonds as well as the expected return.
Thank you, Mr. Tataro. Are there any more questions for Mr. Tataro at this time? Okay, moving along then, I'll move to the solicitors' report. Is Mr. Scott on?
I just, just got on and.
Good timing, Mr. Scott.
Yes, thank you. And I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thanks.
So at that point, move into my report, giving space for Mr. Mayor Campesano when he comes on. So I would like to say, first of all, good evening to all of my fellow council members and also to the residents of Lansdowne. As we're moving forward in this time of COVID, still with our Zoom meetings, I appreciate all those individuals who are taking the time to come on and also work with us in these extraordinary circumstances. And I'd also like to say, first of all, to bear with me, it's somewhat of a lengthy report with a lot of the events that have transpired over the last few weeks. If you remember as well, the last time I was planning to give a report, we were cut off by a tornado or a tornado warning. And so there's a few items that I want to include that did occur before that time. So to begin, I would like to address the events that have been happening over the last three weeks that have, I think, transformed our landscape in the United States and also in our local community. And I want to acknowledge and frankly, admit that there are many people in our community who are suffering and dealing with very difficult emotions and difficult memories perhaps of their own circumstances. I, myself, I have had a difficult time to find the right words to reassure, to calm perhaps, or even what to say to help unite us as a community, what we should be saying to each other, what we should be doing. So it's a time of struggle, I think, for all of us as we're trying to formulate hopefully something new and something better for our community. The best I can do is to, for all of us, to go back to what we took as oaths on council and also to affirm the beliefs that we have in Lansdowne, the guiding principles of our council and of our community. And so I just want to go through a few of those statements of affirmation that we have. We, the representatives of the Lansdowne community, do acknowledge and renounce the history. There was a past history of segregation in Lansdowne and a past history of racism and the lingering effects of racism within our community. And I want to make sure that we acknowledge and renounce that history. That way we can move forward. I want to assert with that that our parks, recreational activities, all of our cultural activities should include and respect all members of the Lansdowne community. The compilation of events that we've transpired, not just the murder of George Floyd in Minnesota, but other events of both of private citizens and public servants has precipitated an outpouring of testimony in our community from members of our Lansdowne community who have been affected similarly in their own experiences. Our task is to listen and to respond with thoughtful analysis and change if we need to change and find the necessary reform if we need to do so. On Thursday, this past Thursday, elected representatives from Yaden, Lansdowne, and the William Penn School District, myself, Councilmember Byrne, Mayor Campesano couldn't be there, but he did sign the letter, as well as the representatives of the school board from Lansdowne were in attendance, as well as the mayor, Mayor Hepkins, and council president Monroe from Yaden and the chiefs of police of Lansdowne and Yaden to reinforce that we are united in upholding the oath we took to uphold the Pennsylvania Constitution. We all took the oath, which reads in Article 1, Section 1, that all people are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent and indefeasable rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life and liberty, of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property and reputation, and of pursuing their own happiness. This is important, I think, to all of us to remember that this is what we are striving to do and have difficult and uncomfortable conversations. That way we can do right by all of the citizens in Lansdowne, all their residents in Lansdowne. This past Sunday, I participated in a walk with Mayor Campesano, Vice President Byrne, Councilmember James, it was an attendance, Councilmember Najee Taylor, alongside Mayor Hepkins and Council President Monroe and other residents of Lansdowne and Yaden and public servants as well. In a peaceful demonstration to recognize the criminal killing of George Floyd and supported the belief that black lives do matter in Lansdowne and Yaden. And we will continue to advocate for more resources and reforms to ensure that members of our mutual communities have the space to breathe in our towns and also in towns throughout America. I would also like to take a moment to commend, I believe that she's an intendant here, the individual who arranged this, our local William Penn School District student, Tori Monroe, for arranging the peaceful demonstration and bringing our two towns closer together. I'd also like to take a moment to commend Chief Donigan, the Lansdowne Police Department, for their professionalism and escorting the march. The behavior of the members of our police force reflects well on the integrity, the professionalism, and leadership of Chief Donigan. I'd like to thank you, Chief, for this and extend gratitude. And if you could extend our gratitude to the whole police department for the flawless interchange between the Yaden Police Departments and Lansdowne Police Department. It was like watching clockwork as the demonstration was going along. I'd also like to commend the Lansdowne Police Department in their continued commitment in our community that I did, over the past couple of weeks, I've made outreach to different community leaders who, to solicit input from as many members from the Lansdowne community as possible. That way we can continue to have an open dialogue to make sure that we are doing what's right by all the citizens in Lansdowne. We will be committing, working in our committees to ensure that the programming that we have in Lansdowne continues towards more inclusion of members of the many different communities that make up Lansdowne and Delaware County. Our strength comes from our diversity. Next, our community moves, as our community moves towards opening from green phase into yellow. This is the next struggle that we have been having in Lansdowne. As we move from the green phase, I'm sorry, from the yellow phase into green, we hopefully can move there with great optimism about the projects that we will be working on in Lansdowne. We did receive word from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission that we were awarded the TCDI Transportation Community Development Initiative Grant, which is a United Grant with Upper Darby, East Lansdowne, Yaden, to help connect our communities even more. On June 2nd, I participated on a phone call with regional mayors and council presidents with Senator Bob Casey, addressing our needs on the local level and how he, the federal government, could assist in helping us with what we need to do to open up. Senator Casey listened to our concerns and needs about opening up from COVID and discussed the Heroes Act and how that could benefit the local communities. Also want to take a moment now to acknowledge one of the commitments in Lansdowne that we made last year by resolution, which was that every June we would honor LGBTQIA month with the raising of the pride flag on Borough Green. Early in June, I believe this is the first or second day in June, we did raise the LGBTQI flag. The pride flag is now flying. So we want to honor and celebrate the fact that June is LGBTQI month in Lansdowne, dedicated so by resolution last year, which honors the struggles and achievements of LGBTQI activists in securing equal rights for Americans of all genders and sexual orientations. We value all of our residents in Lansdowne and we also want to join in celebration with the many members in Lansdowne who, by virtue of the recent Supreme Court decision, now have protection against being fired for their status as somebody who may be lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. So they cannot be fired, disciplined, or prevented from getting a job based upon their gender or sexual orientation. I'd also like to bring note to the fact that tonight we're going to be discussing a resolution honoring Juneteenth. This is a long overdue discussion in our country, that Juneteenth is considered to be the second Independence Day and it's a day that we should have been celebrating for 155 years. The last statement I'd like to make in my report is to encourage, in the past few weeks, I've had numerous individuals reach out about ideas about how, what we should do on Lansdowne government and also even critiques of things that we should do to reform aspects of the government. And I want to encourage all of the residents in Lansdowne to continue the conversation and the dialogue. And not only that, to not just individually talk to one of us on council or the mayor about it, but also to attend all the committee meetings and consider joining boards and commissions. That way they can be part of the conversation about making change within the boards and commissions, which is where a lot of the ideas that we have on council come from. That each and every one of us on council are volunteer public servants, meaning that we don't get paid for it. We do it for the benefit of all of you. We do to fulfill the oaths and we do it with the understanding that this is your representative democracy and it works best if everybody in Lansdowne is engaged. With that, I end my report. I apologize for the length of it. If you have any questions, concerns for me, please ask away. Hearing none, I'll move on to Councilmember Najee Taylor for Public Health and Safety.
Sorry. As of now, I don't have any more to report than what will probably come out into the newsletter, which is the information in reference to us moving into the yellow phase, being mindful of all of the precautions that need to be taken and continue to be taken. There will be some flyers and announcements in the newsletter, which give guidance in what is appropriate for face covering and how to decrease the spread of germs. That's it for the public safety.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilmember Najee Taylor? So given the major topic of conversation, I'll ask a question then for you. I know that I attended public safety and some of the topics came up. How, what is it that are, I know that Chief addressed this a little bit at last council, but what is it that we do with our police department to ensure that our officers are conducting themselves with the professionalism and integrity that we see?
Okay, I thought Chief may want to go over that. That's why I didn't. Usually mayor has his report, chief has a report and those reports, those reports are provided in depth by them. But as far as my understanding, Chief states that besides the regular hiring process, our officers do go through other psychological tests. They, they go above and beyond the interview process that is required by the state.
Chief, do you want to jump in here? I know you talked about it last council meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and what Ms. Taylor said, we talked about before about the hiring process and then a lot of, and then training, continuing training there and the field training program and then basically, you know, senior officers have to stress professionalism and what's expected from officers and document and correct any deficiencies that, you know, we may see early on and, you know, document that and make corrections. Adhere to policies and procedures. And then with training, a lot is like de-escalation training. We have to try to send officers to de-escalation training, which basically teaches officers how to slow down and create space and use communication techniques to potentially defuse dangerous situations. And just basically gives officers different strategies how to deal, hopefully with different situations. And then a lot is also interaction with the community groups that we do. We partnered with the NAACP a few years ago, organized a regional police academy with the local police department, you know, mostly within the William Penn School District. Other than Clifton Heights, we had the departments, you know, that back each other up on mutual aid. So we got together with several departments and had a youth police academy. Unfortunately, we had to end that due to lack of participation. You know, reach out to the kids at the school, go to the local schools, the young age elementary schools, build relationships with them, read books to the kids, stuff like that. And then just with the whole community, with different religious groups and religious leaders, we attended their services and community functions, sat down with them and, you know, have a dialogue with them. We were also, you know, awarded certificates and recognition from Mount Sinai for the service that we do perform for the community. National Night Out, you know, it's for the police and the community to get together and see each other maybe on a different level. We were very successful for a small police department and municipality. We've been fortunate to have a very successful night out. And when we started, only a lot of larger municipalities really had National Night Out. We were one of the, you know, the local, the smaller local municipalities who started and was able to continue that trend and just build relationships with the people in the neighborhood. So as I said, there's always room for improvement, but we work well with council, with the mayor, and then, you know, with the community, try to form the best relationships we can.
Thank you, Chief. And I do want to, again, if you could extend your gratitude to, for your participation and also for the department's involvement in the demonstration on Sunday as well, that it was.
Thank you, much appreciated. It was a team effort. Everybody put everything together like we do and it worked out well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Najee Taylor or for Chief? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to Ms. James, Councilmember James, with the Finance and Administration Report.
Okay, thank you. We met June the 1st, Monday, and we discussed one of the residents, well, he's not a resident, he's a property owner at 80 West Baltimore. He was having some issues contacting the tax collector. And I, he wanted for his fines and his fees to be forgiven for his taxes. So the finance committee, we were going to make that recommendation, but I don't see it on the agenda tonight. So I guess we can, that's the next meeting. And we also discussed the earned income tax receipts and we projected $80,000 and we exceeded it slightly, which is good. So it seems to be on track. We discussed the EIT when residents have been working from home because at this point, most residents have been working from home for 90 days. So we're still looking into if Lansdowne can maybe get some of those taxes from those residents. We also discussed funds that may possibly be available because of COVID-19 from municipalities. And so far, we haven't found too much money out there as of yet, but Craig is still keeping an eye out for that. And I guess the rest, okay, we discussed some staff changes, but sure, library will discuss that. So, and that is it, I believe. Yeah, that's all.
Any questions for Councilmember James? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into our report for economic development. Just a second, bring my notes up. We met last Wednesday and we, a few of the items that we talked about are on the agenda for tonight. So I won't go too much in depth because we'll discuss them then. The first item we took up was from last council meeting was the question of the barricades in the farmers market. And so we do have an amendment to the farmers market agreement. We also discussed the LEDC grant that they, we did disperse the money to the LEDC. And so we discussed the process for doing the tracking for the grant. We also moved into, I'm sorry, discussed the, how COVID, the movement into phase yellow and hopefully into phase green, how it's going to be affecting our businesses as they start to open up. We talked about the. We talked about the receipt of the DVRPC grant for our initiatives for combining and creating that continued vision of Lansdowne of being a pedestrian bike friendly community that supports connections with the communities around us. We then talked about the Juneteenth resolution. There was some discussion. I had an individual approach me about doing a marketing visit video for Lansdowne free of charge with editing. It would, with a significant professional editing, I should say, it would he was proposing to do it for around $1,000. We discussed how we would need to probably take that out and for an open discussion and solicit more options from other individuals. And then we discussed the Walk Works Grant and Greenways and Trails and Recreation Projects and Walk Works Grant is something that Lansdowne has had in the past to do the connecting walkways combined with Yaden as well. Walk, the walking pathways through Lansdowne Yaden. Personal note, after the walk that we took on Sunday, I was, we, my family walked back from it through sort of the, some of the neighborhoods in Yaden and the Lansdowne. It was quite nice to get a view of the different communities from that level rather than from the car. So it's moving again towards that connecting our lived space in between Lansdowne and Yaden and the surrounding communities. That way we have a full-on option for individuals to bike and walk into the city or surrounding communities. That, the last statement I would like to make here is to, I did give a congratulations to the LEDC. They did receive a grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development and for their maker space initiative. So I want to make sure that that's out there as well. Any questions for me concerning economic development? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Councilmember English with Environment Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. President. I haven't, I've been trying to coordinate to get Parks and Rec to be on a Zoom call so that we can get ready for the green. We haven't had that meeting yet, but we are currently working on it as well as discussing some items with the spotter. Later in the fly because they are starting to hatch at this time. But the biggest thing is the library is finally going to be partially open. We haven't changed the hours of the staff. The library is only going to be open for a short period of time. We have had the air conditioning system flushed, so it will, will be safe. They are rearranging the furniture so that our employees can be there. They're still doing the online programming, but they are also now at this point are you can email or call the library, tell them which books you want. You, you will come to pick them up. They will bring them outside. It is contactless. So we are going to see what the use is going to be before we take any next steps on determining expanding the library hours. Right now, it's only going to be like from 10 until four. So once they're doing the curbside pickup for two weeks, the library board is going to meet again at the end of this month and bring their recommendations to a council on whether it's too busy, not busy, et cetera, et cetera. And that is my report in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. English. Are there any questions for Ms. English?
I have one. I heard from some residents that they have seen events taking place at the pavilion in Hoffman Park. Major, just, it looks like just family gatherings. And I wanted to know if we were, if we were back to renting out that space or is that still considered closed? If it was ever closed, maybe I, I didn't understand, but I didn't know how to guide the residents. So I wanted to check with you.
Right now, all of our parks are closed. If you just want to walk around, et cetera. But all, yeah, all, all the fields are closed. The playgrounds have the lovely yellow tape on them. So that is just people going over and using it.
Okay, okay. I'll let them know.
Any other questions for Ms. English?
No, Mr. President, I don't have a question, but I do have something that I forgot to add that, ask that public safety. It was in reference to an instrument for the fire. Maybe it's my, you guys here to feed us?
Yeah. If, if you're not speaking, if everybody could mute themselves?
There was a device that we had brought up earlier this year before COVID that the fire marshal had requested. I, I went back in my notes and I couldn't find if we okayed that device. If we had taken a vote on it, if it was something that we had tabled. So I didn't want to go another meeting without bringing that up. I know Magda had brought it up at public safety. I just can't remember which meeting we had discussed in.
It's in new business for today. So we can talk about it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Ms. English? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next report, which is Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Byrne, Councilmember Byrne, Vice President Byrne, Community Relations.
Hi. I actually just saw that Mayor Tony called, so I'm willing to relinquish my spot so that he can give his report and I'll just go right after if you'd like.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Mayor Campesano.
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry I was late. I apologize. But I'm okay. I can go last. Doesn't mean you got to stop the meeting. Whatever you want to do.
Save the best for last. All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sure. So Community Relations met on June 2nd. The meetings aren't very exciting because, you know, COVID sort of limits the things that we can do. Some updates from our local organizations is just that the LPPA is continuing to meet regularly via Zoom. They did make a request if they could know, have better notice on protests that take place. We did advise them that those protests aren't, aren't generated from the boroughs. So we can't guarantee that we can tell them when a protest is. We just sort of directed them in, in the place where they would be able to find that information when it is posted. LAB is currently working on some administrative projects that they typically don't have time to work on. So they're trying their best to utilize this this little bit of hiatus, so to speak, to sort of build their brand and be prepared for when we, when we do open the 2020 house and they can go back to having art exhibits and openings. So they're working hard towards that. We did also discuss the LGBT flag flying at Borough Hall. And then, of course, we talked about the census, which is still going on despite COVID and civil unrest. The census is still going on. I know that deadline has been pushed back, I think, to the second week in July. I'm sorry, I didn't write that down, but I know I, I know I saw that the deadline was pushed back. So we are still working our best to champion and really educate our citizens in terms of how important it is to complete the census and send their censuses in. We did get some information from the Census Bureau. One of which was that our population has dropped by 9.9%. So that is a percentage that could really hurt our numbers in terms of census completion, which makes it even more critical that, that people really fill out that census. We are trying to promote in different areas now. It seems that the area around Peppers is struggling a little bit. I mean, they're still higher than the state, but, but not as high as we would like. So we have shifted some focus over there and still focusing around the first in terms of making sure that censuses are complete. And our next meeting is July 6th at 6:30.
Any questions for Councilmember Byrne? Hearing none, we'll move to Councilmember Holt with Infrastructure and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was unable to attend the last infrastructure meeting, so I will cede my report to the Borough Manager to just talk about the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Tataro. You speak about the highlights?
Yeah, we did go through several items and a lot of updating on the various projects and things that are happening, which is quite a full plate right now. At this time, we do have something to discuss on is it on the sewer lateral clearing policy under new business. Note for the, we are going to, in the coming probably two to three weeks at the latest in June, as I had reported before, do the painting at the Wildman Arms because the paving of Pendote in that area is still indefinite. At this point, it's, we still don't have a any projection on that, but I think there's generally expectation that it would happen this year, but probably later. And so that will be getting done and we are, everything's in generally in order and moving along. Very pleased to have the support of Mr. Mattson on board, which has been loading up his plate as the the year opens up into the busy season. I don't know if he has anything to add to some of the things that are happening.
Thank you, Craig. Just a few reflections. There have been a number of projects that have been either underway or in motion and Lansdowne is a busy, busy place. Again, we've been trying to keep as much as possible residents able to get in and into and out of their driveways, accessible into their homes. Aqua has, Aqua has been good to deal with. There are a number of projects that are in the queue for takeoff. There was the project for in front of Lansdowne Theater, the sewer rehabilitation project. Again, is ready to set to bid. Again, I think Delcora, which was also a topic that we discussed at the Infrastructure Committee meeting. Delcora and both our Conveyance Authority, the Delaware County Joint Authority are going to be looking forward to those installations as a way to remediate the inflow and infiltration to the system. So a lot of good things, a lot of good projects in the pipeline here in Lansdowne. I also did speak to, just to touch on the other point, when I spoke to Pendote about their intentions to pay both either Lansdowne Avenue or Baltimore Pike, they said they were going to be going out to bid, I think, in the midsummer with a notice of award in August, but their total timetable was about 18 months for that project. So I know that this was an issue for Wildman Arms to get that the crosswalk painted. And again, the timeframe isn't going to work with Pendote. So my recommendation was to move forward and just do it locally and just get it done, you know. So I like good government, intergovernmental cooperation. I love talking to PICO and with Aqua and with Pendote so that we don't look silly when we do our projects. So we're intelligently using taxpayers' resources. But in this case, we got to get that one done because we don't know what Pendote does and they're on schedule. So that's about all I have unless there's any other questions. It's been a lot of fun and it's been a very unusual time with COVID and everything else. So it's been a lot of fun so far. So unless there's any other questions?
Just a quick question for Mr. Tataro and yourself about the other projects that are going on. From, do we have a timetable for the Gateway Slope Project? I know that's been in the works for a while.
We do not. That is that can go at any time, but we're still waiting for some of this spike to go down in the construction that was backed up in order to get the most competitive bids. But I can get with Kevin and we can maybe talk about ironing out. And so we can no longer say we don't know. We'll try and give an exact date as to when we want to release the bids.
I think that's, I think that's still a fair position. We had a bid opening this morning in another community and the bid pricing was completely all over the map. We did, we were able to hit the estimate that we projected, but the whole range of contractors, contractors are fortunate that they're able to resume their projects. So it's still a very, I'll just call it a volatile time for the stock and flow and supply and demand of contractors and projects. So it's probably so good counsel just to wait a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Tataro or Mr. Mattson concerning infrastructure? Hearing none, I'll go back to Mayor Campesano for announcements and also for the mayor's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I apologize to everybody for being late, but work dictated that. I'm glad to be here though. I just have a few items. First of all, I want to thank Dave Boucher and the Boy Scout Troop 63 for replacing the flag at Borough Green on Flag Day. They purchased a new flag and they took the old one out and put the new one in. So I want to thank them. That was their idea. Even though there was not a Flag Day ceremony, they took it upon themselves to do that. I thank them for that. I also was thinking that maybe the Environmental Committee could look into maybe having a shredding event in late summer or early fall. As you know, we've done this every year. I can talk to Mayor Dukes from East Lansdowne about joining in. So if the committee would let me know what their thoughts are, I'd be glad to do that. I just think with everybody being at home, there's a lot of cleaning, cleaning out of houses, of records and papers. So I think it would be helpful for the residents to at least have a shredding event. I know we've also had a recycling event, but that's gone up with cost. As you know, last time we had it, the DA paid for it. So I don't know if that would happen again. So I'm just recommending that we at least have a shredding event for right now. So I'll wait to hear from the committee and let, just keep me posted about talking to Mayor Dukes. I also wanted to make sure the codes department has been informed about concerns about stop signs, intersections and sidewalks being blocked by tree limbs. I brought this up at the Public Safety Committee. I did talk to Mike Josniak. He was not aware of any of that. So I want to make sure, Craig, that he gets what we talked about from the Public Safety Committee. The examples are like Drexel and Owen. There's a stop sign that's being blocked. West Greenwood and Lansdowne Avenue, the intersection is blocked if you can't see Lansdowne Avenue from it. And we've had problems with that before. Also, Windermere and Plumstead, there's bushes blocking the sidewalk. And that's just to name a few. I think somebody's got to go around the town and take a look. So just bringing that up. Also, I was wondering, there's also a huge pothole in the parking lot next to the landing across from the theater. I think it's dangerous and needs to be fixed. It's not just a little pothole. I noticed it a couple of days ago. So just bring it to your attention, Craig. Also, I was wondering if anybody else has noticed that there's been a lot of fireworks going off after 11 o'clock at night. Quite a few nights and also a lot of motorcycles that are extremely loud and cars. I've gotten some complaints. I know it's not just Lansdowne because I've also talked to other people. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do about that. I know fireworks are legal now, but I did see in Philly that they're talking about putting some kind of limits because it's getting out of hand. And I'm just talking fireworks are okay during the, you know, eight o'clock, 10 o'clock, but we're talking midnight and some of them sound like bombs. And that, with everything going on, that could be upsetting to people. So Chief, I didn't know with the motorcycles. I know there's some requirements that bikes aren't that bikes aren't allowed to take something out of their mufflers to make them loud. I was wondering if we give tickets out to bikes that are extreme, extremely loud or cars that have been modified to be loud? Because to me, driving at midnight at 1 o'clock in the morning through a town that's completely quiet is pretty disturbing. So again, I'm bringing it to everybody's attention because I've noticed it, and a couple of other residents have reached out to me. So anyway, also was wondering if our local businesses have to be certified for COVID in any way before they open. The reason I ask this, I had to take a class for my Philadelphia license that involved COVID, and I noticed that there was many courses that pertained to different businesses, all from, you know, delis to supermarkets to haircutters, and it all pertained to COVID, what you needed to do. Mine was basically a short course. It took me probably five hours online to do it, and I got a certificate. And I'm just bringing this up because I don't know. I want the businesses to be open. I want them to succeed. But I didn't know if this was something we as a borough are supposed to be monitoring through our code department or whatever, Board of Health or whatever, that they have to take these classes online. So just putting it out there for thought. Finally, I want to thank the chief and our police department for their great job in taking part on Sunday's march. And I want to thank President Hoover, who was involved in helping set it up with Yaden's Borough Council. I thought it was a great day. The young woman who put it together was tremendous, and it just was a great day to be part of. But I wanted to thank the chief and the police for their part. And that basically is my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Campisano. I'll just direct very quickly to Bob Scott. Bob?
On the training, I'm not aware of any that is under the jurisdiction of the borough. I would assume that some businesses that are licensed by the state might be subject to such regulations, but it would be that state licensing board that would monitor and enforce that. You know, as you know, I represent several municipalities, and I'm not aware of any having any obligations to do that, to do that training or monitor that training for businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Just checking, making sure.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Tataro?
And I'll keep my eyes open for that. But as I said, I don't think it's a local requirement.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Tataro, if you could convey the other concerns about the limbs and such to the Highway Department, and we can move forward with the safety in the community that Mayor Campisano brought up.
Yes, same, Mr. President. I was in touch with Ms. Taylor, and she had communicated that, and that did get passed along to the Highway Department to be looked at.
Good. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or thoughts for Mayor Campisano?
Hi, Mr. President. Chief.
Hi, Chief.
I just want to thank the mayor for his words, and also just a couple of things that he brought up. With the fireworks, there have been lots of reports, like the mayor said, all different municipalities and communities and everything. We have responded to a few. We have not found any, anyone in Lansdowne yet. I mean, I know there are Marshall Road Fields the other night in Upper Darby, and then I think maybe even Penn Pines Park they may be coming from, but they sound like, you know, they're right on top of us in Lansdowne. But just want to remind residents just to call if they actually see and try to pinpoint the location, because we have been trying to track down where they're coming from to really no avail in Lansdowne. But they're, actually, like, it's been on the news nationwide that it's been a big increase with fireworks, just because, well, now it's legal here in Pennsylvania, but just with COVID and everything, and people can social distance and everything and just get out. And it's been a problem throughout the nation. And with the mufflers, we haven't really received many complaints with the mufflers. I'm not sure if they're the mini bikes. So we do have sometimes issues with the mini bikes that come out when the weather's nice and everything, and it presents a very dangerous situation to the police because those motorbikes, if we try to stop them, they usually run from us and take off. And we're not going to chase a mini bike to put the person or anybody in danger. And a lot of times, they're, they could be even juveniles on those mini bikes. So they're a different breed of when we try to deal with vehicle traffic. But there are some where mufflers on cars and bikes, if they are modified, they can receive tickets for that. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. But that's what I'm talking about. The ones that I've heard and I've actually seen, because I went out, weren't the dirt bikes. They were regular bikes, but they were extremely loud. So I just wanted some clarification on it. But thanks. Okay?
Thank you. Yep.
Okay. There are no other questions for Mayor Campisano. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is communications. At this time, I'm going to call on one of the audience members. I know that we have a time for public comments, but I want to take a moment of personal discretion and have her present in the communications part. Ms. Monroe, would you mind speaking to all of council at this time?
Yes, I would. Hello, and thank you. Good evening. First off, I would like to thank Lansdowne Borough Council a lot for your participation in the protest on Sunday without your combined forces of the Yaden Borough Council. I would not have nearly enough support for supporting the cause. And I'd just really like to thank you and the police department. And if you do not know me, hello, I'm Victoria Monroe. I go to Penwood High School, and I'm a resident of Yaden, and my grandmother is a resident of Lansdowne. My duty here today is to follow up on some demands and requests that I said in my speech that most of you have probably heard, because I know more than anything that, of course, if you protest and, you know, talk about changes in your community, it's really your local government who actually provide you with the tools to make that change. So I'd just like to reiterate what I think is necessary for our local communities and Delco. First off, I'd like our police department to have annual implicit bias training taught by people of color, which is very, very important for seemingly obvious reasons. I want the police departments to have a mandatory act and intervene policy when an officer is committing a crime. And if that policy is violated, could, they could end up facing severe consequences and disciplinary action. I want the police officers to be required to wear fully functioning body cams that are kept on at all times when on duty. I'd like to end immunity for murder and for the police to actually take accountability for their actions. We'd like, excuse me, we'd like policies and training in order to criminalize violent reactions to peaceful situations. We'd like the immediate ban of any type of chokehold or explanation caused by a police officer. And finally, and I won't say most importantly, but something that really matters to me is wanting the police department and our fellow police officers to have positive connections with the school and local residents, because I feel if the police departments have a positive light in our community, there could be more of a connection and trust between, you know, our local government and police officers, police departments, excuse me, and our communities and residents. That is it. Once again, thank you for everything. And if needed, I will always be a call or email away.
Thank you for attending our meeting, Ms. Monroe. And I want to personally congratulate you on taking the stand and being a student still, yet motivating community members of all ages to come out and listen to the concerns, listen to your requests, and also motivate people to make changes within our community. So I appreciate the time that you took to come to our meeting. And I do want to assure you as president of council that we in Lansdowne take very seriously the concerns that you express. We want everybody to be safe in our community, and our committees will be taking up action to look at our policies and look at what we need to do for reform in Lansdowne. So thank you for coming out.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Would any, are there any other council members like to say anything to Ms. Monroe? I wanted to let you go first because I know that you probably don't want to sit here and listen to us discuss our sewer laterals in depth. So I wanted to give you that opportunity.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Monroe, too, for a great job on Sunday. And, you know, I said to your mother, I said, "Our future is bright with young people like you who show the courage and the determination and the belief." So I wish you all the best, and thank you again for all your work, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. President, can I say something, please?
Absolutely. Chief Donaghy.
Ms. Monroe, I also wanted to say congratulations to a very successful event that you had this past Sunday. You did a great job. Like the mayor said, you know, our future is in good hands with students and individuals like you. I wrote down as fast as I could the things that you wanted the police department. The first one, can you repeat that for me, please?
Sure. Of course. Mandatory annual implicit bias training taught by people of color.
Thank you.
No problem.
The only thing that I would like to say, I truly am appreciative of your efforts and the things that you've done. I would just like to encourage you to encourage your peers to become as involved and supportive and spread the understanding that things don't get changed at the president level. As you know, local government is important. However, participation in local government is important. So it is important that whatever you do, participate in your local government. Meetings, committee meetings, board meetings, encourage people your age to engage and understand what's going on from the ground up. But other than that, I do appreciate you and the time and the efforts that you made. Keep up the good work.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Najee Taylor just encouraged a thought in my mind. We're still looking for a junior council member in Lansdowne. So if you have any peers that go to school and live in Lansdowne who would like to take part, send them my email, and they can come and listen to us discuss our issues and how we do things here on council at each of the meetings and become a junior council member. We'd love to have somebody take part. I've been looking for somebody for a couple of years now.
Of course. People definitely, you know, jumped in my mind when you say junior committee member, and I will make sure to get the message out.
Thank you. Okay. With that said, I'm going to move on to a few other items of communication that I think it's important to get into the record, that we did receive a letter from the First Presbyterian Church of Lansdowne. And I'm going to read the letter. It says, "Please accept this letter as a call for peace, but peace cannot be achieved without justice, and justice cannot occur when those charged with maintaining peace believe violence is appropriate based on their own bias. We call on you to change your hiring practice to eliminate men and women with deep bias from entering your police force. The essence for your law enforcement personnel is the same as for any good business. If you cannot trust the person to behave as you would, remove him or her from your staff. We are very aware that being a law enforcement person is difficult and too often thankless. It is human nature to blame the cop when you get caught doing what you know you should not have been doing in the first place. We know this, and we want to thank all those hardworking, underappreciated keepers of the peace. But what we saw transpire in Minneapolis is negative commentary on us all, and those who do not speak out against it are silently recommending it. What was most frightening in Minneapolis is that the other police stood by and did nothing. It is one thing to have a rogue cop, but for other uniformed officers to smile and refuse to intervene while one of their own commits murder demands that we as human beings, let alone members of a Christian church, say, "No, we will not accept this." As American citizens, we will not allow a police state. As human beings, we will not tolerate such inhumane behavior. As Christians, we will, with courage, say no. You and your officers have to be aware that this incident is taken as a reflection on all of you and all of your fellow officers, men and women everywhere. These men have been allowed to make your jobs much harder and frankly, more dangerous. These are people now convinced resisting uniforms may well be a life-saving behavior. I'm sorry, there are people now convinced that resisting uniforms may well be a life-saving behavior. At a time of chaos, that is certainly not the message to send. We do express our gratitude for what most of your members do to protect us. Our church frequently lifts up all frontline people, police, fire, nurses, doctors, teachers, et cetera. To all them, we say thanks to those corrupted by their own power. We say no. That's from the First Presbyterian Church of Lansdowne." Then there is another item here. See. From Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church. "Mr. Benjamin Hoover, I pray that you and your family are staying safe and encouraged during this very challenging time. The members at Bethel are doing well, staying and safe. I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Anthony Campisano, members of the Borough Council, the police and fire departments for the support all of you have provided. We thank God for the work that of all you do in Lansdowne, providing a safe community which is inclusive and diverse. Your continued efforts to keep us informed and aware of opportunities for sharing the gospel of Jesus Christ is remarkable. We appreciate our time ministering to constituents at activities. We're eternally grateful for your connectedness to all of us at Bethel and the community. The police and fire departments have been a blessing, and whenever we needed their help, they responded in a timely fashion. The partnership we've established is noteworthy, and the members have been kind. The members that live in the borough have no complaints and continue to feel a sense of purpose within the community. On behalf of the members, we thank you for our relationship and your continued efforts to reach out to the faith community." And that is from Reverend Deborah Speaks from Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church. So we have those three items of communication. I just wanted to make sure that they were all in the record and that we, as members of council, take into consideration what we were doing. As the chief also took notes during the communication. So as we move forward and look about changes that we look to that communication. That said, we're going to move on into old business. The first item of old business is the discussion of the farmer market barricades and amendment. Can Mr. Tataro, would you remind us what this item is about, the amendment?
Sure, Mr. President. This just formalizes a past practice of loaning barricades to the LEDC for use of the farmer's market, as well as their stowing of them during the farmer's market season, as well as the handoff to, hand it off to them, as well as collecting at the end of the season, just to formalize that this is happening. And so that's in your packets was the Second Amendment to the farmer's market and approved as an action item. If council chooses to do so, we can choose to execute that. And so again, this is really just putting in writing something that's already going on.
Thank you. So that was, I believe, came up in an item previously in council, and something we discussed, just to clarify that item in the farmer's market agreement. Any questions or thoughts about the farmer's market barricades? Okay. That said, we'll move to new business. And the first item is a sewer lateral clearing policy. Could you please discuss what that means for all of us?
Yes, sure. And I ask Mr. Mattson cares to weigh in as well if I missed something. And this is, in Lansdowne, it's important to know that the lateral that leaves for sewage that leaves the house typically runs into somewhere within the street casing. And it could be on the near side of your house, or it could be all the way across to the other side of the street, typically somewhere in the middle, we'll call it. And the, that that lateral pipe which runs perpendicular to the sewer main is the responsibility of the homeowner. Somewhere around the sidewalk in the front of a typical house is a cleanout. And that's normally where, if there's a blockage in the lateral or the homeowner portion, is where you see an overflow of sewage from a house. Some residents will call plumber, some residents call the borough, thinking that it's the borough's responsibility. And during the week, or actually anytime, we go out and we have a policy of doing a courtesy plunge, sometimes these situations can be cleared by going out and plunging at this trap, it's called. And this is something we do as a matter of course, but what happens is during the weekends, and this has become a really much more frequent during COVID and during people being home all the time, and there's a lot more use on the laterals, and we've been called out many times now during off hours during the weekends, which is an expensive overtime situation of at least a couple of hours. Underlying this is the, it's often or disproportionately the number that people who are calling are landlords who take advantage of this as, instead of calling a plumber, they can get a free plunge from the borough. Not always, but it's more likely that the, these, and these are more likely to go to clog up because a lot of our homes have been converted into two or three units, or, but they remain with a four-inch lateral. So what we're recommending is that council consider that we respond only if the homeowners or the property owners are aware that this would be a charge on weekends. We still do these courtesy plunges during the week because we're here, and it's just a, generally fits in, it's not that big of a, it's a couple of hours. It's probably one hour during the normal workday for one or two people, whereas in the weekend, it's calling them in, it ends up being several hours and it's overtime, double time on Sunday. So I think that clarifies, we had discussed this in the infrastructure committee meeting, and what would have to happen if council was, wanted to do that, we'd have to put some limitations, some parameters around that as to when this premium time, if you will, begins and ends, and what the rates would be, and any other considerations that we'd have to try and predict, what would, what we'd have to have in place for such a policy or practice to change. Think I got everything? I don't know if Kevin has any clarification on that.
The only thing I wanted to add, Craig, was, and again, I trust that all the council members are familiar with our equipment, but the borough does own its own sewer jet truck, and it's using the boroughs. We don't subcontract this out, we're not hiring a third party. It's the borough highway crew that's going out there, the public work crew that's going out there, and on weekends they're getting overtime. So this is, this is an issue with the resources and, you know, the fairness of who should be paying for these sorts of calls. I think that's it.
Good. Any thoughts? And I'll go through, Mr. Holt.
I mean, right now, I kind of agree where Craig and Mr. Mattson are. Just ironically, I literally had to have a sewer line cleared today, right? And it's not a cost prohibitive thing. It's something that you don't want to spend, but it's not something that's so cost prohibitive that a resident can't get.
Ms. James?
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Schley?
Yeah, things should be developed in committee and brought back to council.
Okay. So I believe that you're saying the committee has discussed this, so what do we, what's our next step then? Just set the parameters?
Yeah, I would say we'd set the parameters that two I can think of are, you know, the time, so Friday 6:00 PM or 5:00 PM until Monday at 8:00 AM. And the cost, which we would set as a per hour, or maybe we would be able to come up with a flat fee. And I believe if the solicitor concurs that as a practice, the only, or as a, for Borough Council to officially do that, it would just be a change to, or adding something to our fee schedule. But otherwise, it's a matter of operational practice, correct?
I think that's right. I think just the fee resolution would do it.
Okay. So you, that will be constructed then and brought back to the next council for us to vote upon?
Yes.
Okay.
And Craig, we'll talk, we just want to set it somewhere where we're not undercutting private business either.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we're, have a consensus on that. Next item then is the TC DI.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely, chief, sorry.
Yeah, for that, I was just wondering if there's anything that, you know, if it's a flyer that we can have, because a lot of times it starts with us because people will call 911. So before the resident's able to make that decision, if we can, we're going to have to have the information, and if we can have it maybe on some type of flyer, and we can hand them or something, maybe that'll be easier and they can see it, especially when it comes down to prices. So just so there's no confusion, because we're going to be the ones initially who are responding to the call. So, and then the next step. So I don't know if a flyer or something like that would be best, or how to go about it, but just so the committee who's dealing with it just is aware of that, that we'll be dealing with it.
Yeah, that's, that's great. We did talk about how this happens, that the police get called. And so, yeah, it makes great sense to have something in your hand to, as a communication.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So we'll move that then. Make sure that we have that on the agenda for next council to vote on the fee change. Next item is the TC DI grant award. As I mentioned, we did receive the grant from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Corporation. And it's a good award that gives us the ability to develop our transportation plans in connection with our surrounding communities. Would you like to speak more about that, Craig? The details about the money involved, our next steps? Craig? Mr. Tatar, are you there?
Maybe he's.
Hey.
There he is. Okay. Mr. Tatar?
I got, I got kicked off, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So we're talking about the, the grant award, our next steps of where we need to go with the award from DVR PC. And we did receive the award, what's our next step?
Sure. So the next Thursday is a meeting having to do with contracting. So we, the next step will be to probably some back and forth for about 30 days after that, execute a contract. So there'll be a contract that comes before Borough Council. We sign that, and then we put together a little bit of a steering committee, and we put a request for proposals that will go out to planning firms. And that should get coordinated with the other municipalities, as well as the Bike Coalition who's also signed on as a participant, and the Delaware County Transportation Management Association. That's a big group, probably best to have a group of three or four at the most. And so we'd have to put together, what is it that we want to put out there that we want to see happen? That's essentially creating a set of deliverables based on what we applied for. The, what we applied for was, put in general terms, we now have to drill that down in specifics, similar to like we did with our local bike plan. And so that would go out, and we'd interview planning firms, and the task group would be part of a committee to make a selection. As Lansdowne is the lead, we would be then signing a contract with some planning firm. So that's the general beginning of the process. Obviously, that at some point, we would actually begin to work with the bike route firm, if you will, to work through those deliverables.
Okay. So for tonight, this is just informational purposes, and then we'll move selection of individuals who want to take part in that steering committee. So if any of the individuals, I'm more than willing to take part in that. If anybody else wants to take part in that, please let me know. And then we'll move the different items through the committees to be brought back to the whole council. Is that, that the format we're going for? I think that's the best way to do it, to break up the items. Okay. Any other questions about the TC DI grant? Okay, hearing that, we'll move to the next item, which is the, this Saturday, we do have our second food drive taking place. This time is a little bit different than last time. We are coordinating with Delaware County. That way, they're going to be sending individuals to help distribute the food. There are other communities that have been less fortunate than our own. Local food banks have done a pretty good job of collecting food and also money. And so we are still partnering with, with our local food banks, but they, Delaware County is sending individuals over to help collect. One of the asks that I have for us is if it's possible to have the Lansdowne Borough Truck there. I bring this to council that I understand is a little bit different than usual, but to be able to transport the food, and we would be just transporting food locally, probably across the street, using the Lansdowne Borough Truck. I would be driving it, so that's, I want to present all of that to the whole council if there's any questions or concerns about this.
I have one, Mr. President.
Certainly.
Do we have any driver restrictions on our auto insurance policy?
Send that to Mr. Scott.
We did discuss this, and I believe we were going to call and confirm. I don't know if staffs had an opportunity to do that.
I did, I have not heard back. We've done something similar in the past, I recall, and it's just a matter of notifying them that this is happening, and I don't know if they'll require anything different this time.
I would just be very wary of any listed driver exclusions that sometimes occur in commercial policies.
Yeah, and it should, it needs to get insurance clearance.
Okay. If it gains insurance clearance, are there any other issues? Does council have an issue with that happening this Saturday? I would definitely not drive a vehicle if I did not have the insurance requirement.
I'm okay with it, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have no objections, Mr. President. I wouldn't want to see you personally responsible for this.
I appreciate that concern. Mr. Schley, and anybody else have any concerns? And I also want to invite the whole community out to, again, contribute to the food drive. And if anybody on council can stop by and deliver that food, that would be, deliver food as well, or participate, that would be fantastic as well. So that is happening. It's different, again, times different, it's nine to 12 instead of 10 to 12. And there will be county personnel there as well.
Okay. Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
It's the Highland Avenue lot behind Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That said, then we'll move to the next item, the Delkor update. I know this has been a big item in the news with the county, with the issues with Delkor. We did have communication, I think many of you probably received it, from Delkor with concerns about the transfer to county. I personally don't want to get involved in a dispute between the county council and Delkor, and I want to make sure that we, on our end, just understand what's happening on the local level. So is there an update for that, Mr. Tatar, or Mr. Mattson, or Mr. Scott?
What I'm aware of is that there was an official dissolvement of the prior plan to sell or privatize the authority into the hands of Aqua. It's also been described as a merger. I don't know if there's a meaningful distinction in that. And that was a January 4th resolution that was adopted by county council.
June 4th.
June, June 4th, sorry. And I would expect that there's been some challenges that happened from that, and more or less, that's been the major development since our last meeting, or last time we discussed it.
And I'd just remind you, I have, I've been involved with the county's effort to oppose the sale of Delkor's assets to Aqua, so I have a conflict, so I don't want to, I want you to be aware of that. Anything I say comes with a bias, so I, I'm not going to say much more as a result, so.
All right, thank you. How does it affect, I know, Mr. Schley, Mr. Holt, you were on the Derby Creek Joint Authority. Do you know, have any feeling about how this will affect us locally?
It's been a number of years since I've been involved with it, Mr. Hoover. I really have no insight at this time.
And Mr. Mattson? Any thoughts about how it would affect us?
And truthfully, the name on the sign down at Delkor could be a number of different operators. It could be Aqua, it could be Delkor, it could be Delaware County, it could be some other new authority that's created. I've visited that plant many times. It's a very well-run facility, it's very state-of-the-art, they suck a lot of money into it. So it's understandable that perhaps someone would want to be attracted to it to purchase it. The only real, pardon me, area of concern from Lansdowne's point of view would be what would happen to the rates. So ultimately, the DCJA, the Delaware County Joint Authority is its own independent authority, which is Lansdowne has a collection system, the DCJA, which is the pipeline that runs down to the pump station that then transfers flow to Delkor, is its own independent authority. And I believe we're only talking about Delkor. So the question would be, if some other entity were to take over Delkor or its operation, who would have control over the rates ultimately, and the agreements in our place about how the rate payers here in Lansdowne would be affected? And I think that's one of the big questions. So ultimately, I think, as those of us who are concerned about the environmental protection as far as the good work that Delkor does to treat sewage, I think that would remain intact. And I think that there wouldn't be somebody. And I think that uh, there wouldn't be somebody else who wouldn't be a good steward of the environment, doing the good work that Delkor does, but it's really what would happen to the overall rates? And since uh, Aqua uh, is a publicly traded company, naturally, they have an interest for their shareholders. Delkor, as an operating authority under the Municipal Authorities Act in Pennsylvania, uh, applies by some different rules, applies by some different rules. Uh, well, it's just a question of what, what would end up happening to the rates. So I think from, from our hyper-local perspective here in Lansdowne, that's just the one question. But, and that, I think any of that, it right now is, is sort of speculation. I don't think there's been anything concrete.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, um, Mr. Mattson. And I think all of us need to just keep, be aware of it, keep our eyes on what's happening and uh, return to it if we see that Lansdowne might have an issue with it. With that said, we'll move to the next item, uh, which is inclusionary policy. Uh, this is a, an item stemming out of um, concerns and uh, recent discussions, national discussions, also local discussions uh, that have occurred to make sure that Lansdowne is living up to its ideals of including um, all individuals, all members of Lansdowne in um, its programming. Um, with that said, uh, we put out a statement, I sent it out to each of you uh, from Lansdowne perspective of what we need to do to improve ourselves as a community. And so with that in mind, um, the, an ad hoc committee, um, I'm forming an ad hoc committee with myself, um, council member Najee Taylor and council member Holt. And uh, council member James has also requested, and, and I, I certainly would love to have her take part in uh, discussing what we're doing to ensure that uh, we have um, individuals who are um, of different nationalities, individuals of different races, individuals of different religions, taking part in uh, the programming, um, to make sure that we truly reflect the demographics of Lansdowne um, and what we're paying for in terms of our cultural programming. Um, and so it's, it's looking at that and also doing outreach necessary to uh, members of uh, the, the many uh, constituents of, in Lansdowne, the men, the many different communities that we have in Lansdowne. Um, to, to really uh, take a look and, and make sure that we're living up to what we say uh, that we're going to do. Um, and with that in mind, so it'd be the creation then of a policy to give to different boards and commissions and considerations about the programming that we're paying for. And perhaps uh, the idea of creating then also um, some new events that we, we mark in Lansdowne. That, I think we have a lot of great events and unfortunately, a lot of them have been put on hold because of COVID. Uh, but just to make sure that we are um, incorporating new celebrations into our cultural life as well. Um, any thoughts or questions about this uh, movement with the ad hoc committee? And with this policy?
Okay. Mr. Pres- Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I, Mr. President, I just want to applaud you and the rest of the committee who uh, came up with this idea. I think it's, it's something that we need to do, and it's well overdue. So I wish you luck with it, and I think it, you know, I think it's appropriate. And uh, again, I appreciate the insight that you and the committee have come up with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. And we'll definitely um, run ideas by you as we uh, move forward with, on council, uh, with the ideas. All right, uh, next item then is the census child census. Is this uh, new business or old business, Craig? This looks like an old idea. Okay.
It's old. It, we got cut off because of the.
Oh, that's correct. That's right. Okay.
Yeah, thunderstorm business.
Yep, thunderstorm business.
Yeah.
Council member Byrne, go ahead.
Sure, um, so the Subcommittee for the Census came up with this flyer. Um, now that we're moving into the yellow phase and childcare facilities are starting to open, um, we thought we'd create something that we could bring to these childcare facilities to give to parents, encourage them to fill out the census and fill it out completely. One of the most undercounted um, people in the census are children under five. Uh, so it's really important to highlight that um, that they're counted and what happens when they're not counted, what monies are affected. Especially when it comes to children. And for a lot of, of folks that have children in childcare, a lot of them, some, some get subsidies from the state. And those can be lessened if the number is not high enough. So, here packets is the flyer. You can see it in the email. Uh, the only thing that's different from the packet that's in your flyer is that we changed the bottom line, which says, "Look for your census letter in the mail," to, "It's not too late to complete." Since we're way into the process now, um, if you've gotten it in the mail, you would have gotten it by now. But um, essentially, these would be printed using money from the grants received at the LEDC. Um, and then we would distribute them to the childcare facilities that are open.
So this is um, more of an FYI. We don't need to take any action on this. Uh, Mr. Scott?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I think that um, it looks good on my end. If anybody has any concerns, uh, please speak now. I think it's fine to send it out.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item then is Juneteenth Resolution. This is an item that we took up at Economic Development uh, last week. And uh, it's also a movement towards inclusion of um, looking towards the inclusion of more celebrations and celebrations that should have been included, uh, that have not uh, been in our community. Last year, Governor Wolf signed a proclamation declaring uh, Juneteenth uh, um, a holiday in, and a day of observance in Pennsylvania. Um, so we are following suit with uh, Governor Wolf that not only has Governor Wolf signed it, but it's also a resolution that's been passed unanimously um, in the House of Congress uh, towards the celebration of Juneteenth. There is a larger uh, national movement to actually uh, turn Juneteenth into a um, full day of uh, to be a national holiday that is celebrated throughout all of the states. Currently forty-six out of fifty states do celebrate it. Um, and it is a, a holiday that is uh, called by historians throughout the country as the second day of independence, or second national day of independence. Um, that honors the moment in time in which um, individuals who were enslaved in uh, Texas and Galveston have received news that they would, uh, did have freedom, that they were emancipated. Um, that was two years after the emancipation proclamation was passed, but uh, individuals were still enslaved up to that point. And so it's in celebration of that holiday that uh, began in Texas, spread throughout um, the southern states initially, and then spread uh, to the entire United States as people moved away from Texas. It's been uh, brought about and revived at different times. It was a major holiday uh, that was used by the Civil Rights Marchers in nineteen sixty-eight as a centerpiece of the Poor People's Campaign as well. And so it's to, to note this importance to economic liberation um, that the Emancipation Proclamation brought, but also to recognize then as a, a source of community building and also economic liberation are currently in our communities. So if there's any uh, questions or concerns, uh, part of the resolution does note, if you uh, take a look, uh, so that, that we would be forming Lansdowne Committee to actually do a um, a day of observance next year for Juneteenth, uh, with the idea of having um, a celebratory uh, holiday with it. Um, I think it's a very easy continuation of it is to, um, there is a Juneteenth flag that was uh, put into circulation by the Juneteenth Observance uh, Foundation in nineteen ninety-seven, that we uh, should also purchase that uh, flag and have that as part of the celebration to raise that flag on um, the Lansdowne uh, Borough Green Flag Pole. So if there's any questions, thoughts, or concerns about the Juneteenth Resolution?
Should we change the adopted date? It says on it now, April fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Oh, it should say June, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how it had April fifteenth on it.
Nothing major. That's all I have. It's great. I'm glad we're doing it.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts, or concerns? Okay. Sorry, go back to the agenda. All right, next item then is our thermal sensors, um, and I'll turn that over to you, Councilmember Najee Taylor.
Oh, this was a request um, put in for a piece of equipment that would assist in detecting fires in the wall. It's a smaller piece of equipment. Um, it, it's mobile in the, um, it's in the hands of the, the fire chief or fire marshal. Um, and I do believe that the price, he was quoted with seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so if anyone would be in agreement to purchase this piece of equipment for the fire department?
Can I, can I just um, ask for um, one more meeting to do a little bit more research on that? I did speak with um, the co-director on this and we wanted to ask a couple of uh, questions about um, how and where and why it's used and that sort of thing. Um, so, um, and it's a little bit technically, um, I'm not clear on what it is. Um, and.
Okay, that's fine. I thought I previously sent out the information. It's been a while.
It was. We didn't talk, we talked about it back in like January or.
Yeah.
Or we were.
One of my first or second.
Yeah.
One of my first or second um, meetings as chairing.
Yeah, and it would be specifically for the fire marshal, which is why it's coming to council because the fire department has a separate budget. But the fire marshal, I believe, hits our budget, and that's why we're talking about it here.
Yeah, fire marshal is a borough employee as opposed to the fire chief, for example.
Yes, yes, thank you for that.
Yeah.
And um, Ms. English, do you have any thoughts about it?
Um, I know when we discussed it at the previous meeting, I think Mr. Young was supposed to come back with, he showed us the paperwork on a particular one and we asked him for just a list of the requirements because it's not like you or I go out and buy it. You would have to have a list of the requirements and then because we are a government entity, we would have to, to order it whatever way. So I don't know if he ever got us back the list of requirements of what it would need. Um, because you're right, I think it was January or February, and then COVID came up and everything went topsy-turvy, but I'm sure if he could give us a, a list of requirements of what it needs to have. Uh, because you're right, I think it was, you know, a little over seven hundred dollars, but there was a lot of technical things on what we need to have. Um, so I'm sure if he could get that to us so that we could find the best pricing, if it's something that we want to do.
All right, thank you, Ms. English. Um, Ms. James, any thoughts?
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no, I um, no, I don't, I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else have anything to add? So is the consensus then that we're asking um, this Najee Taylor to take it back to committee with um, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you. If you could do that then, um, Ms. Najee Taylor. And then move on to the next item, I believe it is, um, the last item is My Brother's Keeper. Um, this is an item that would require uh, some consideration on the part of the borough and then also inner borough, intermunicipal uh, cooperation. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Byrne uh, to discuss with everybody uh, whether or not we want to proceed with it, and if so, how to do so. Um, because I know there are some specific requirements for it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, My Brother's Keeper is an initiative that is been, um, that has been put in place by the Obama Foundation. Um, for those who are familiar, it is, in, in a way, is very similar to um, No Place For Hate. If you remember our No Place For Hate appointments that we used to have, um, a, a couple of years ago, No Place For Hate shifted their focus to more of schools and nonprofits. And so they don't take away our appointment, but they also don't renew it anymore. So, um, My Brother's Keeper is something um, in, along a similar vein. Um, but it is uh, specific to um, policy and procedure when it comes to keeping citizens safe and keeping youth safe, um, and things along those lines. So it, it is, um, it, it seems like a simple task because you make an oath. You take an oath, um, and it, and it is also, um, it's a, a group that, in order to join it, you have to be, you, it, the mayor has to join it. So, Tony, get ready. Um, so, um, it's an oath that you take with six steps. Um, and then once you, once you, the oath involve, it's very child-focused. So it's about, um, it, it works a lot with um, ensuring children read at a certain level, um, that they're safe from violent crime, that, that, um, when they leave school, that they're able to find employment, things along those lines. Um, then you onboard with um, the coalition. And then, once you do that, the other requirements are very time-consuming. They're very um, time-sensitive. So for instance, once you do that, you have a hundred and eighty days to um, put together a coalition and, and host a local action summit. And so I don't know if there's any adjustment to that because we're in COVID, but um, we would have a hundred and eighty days to get together with local action people and, and key um, stakeholders to assess the needs of um, the communities and determine priorities and set goals. And then you, after that, you would have to also go through and conduct a policy ve- review and form recommendations for, for the actions. So you would um, work with, um, you would work with like your local police and stuff to go through their policies and procedures or the schools' policies and procedures. Um, but it says that it would basically, you would go across public agencies and community partners to um, to build, initialize the effort until the goals are reached. And then, once you complete those things, you then have ninety days to launch your plan of action with a timeline that gets reviewed by the My Brothers Keeper Coalition. So, I, it's great if we can do it. I would love to do it. Um, but I, I do need buy-in from everybody because everybody's gonna have to touch something on here. And I'm happy to st- send these steps to folks if anybody has any questions. I mean, I'll answer what I can. I've been reading a lot about it, but I, I'm still learning myself. But I'm happy to answer what I can, whatever I can.
So for all of us, and this is some of the, uh, I, I think that the initiatives that are in the proposal are, are really great initiatives. It's just one of those, those challenging um, propositions that, first of all, on the borough level, that we would have to look at ourselves and what we can do. Um, Mayor Campesano, as uh, Ms. Byrne alluded to, would have to uh, pledge to become part of it. Uh, then we on council would have to, in our committees, look at uh, do the, with, in conjunction with our police department, look at the policy changes. But not only that, it's the connection to the William Penn School District that we'd have to do outreach with the William Penn School District. They would have to agree to be part of that coalition. And we have that complicating factor of being one of many boroughs in the William Penn School District. So before we do any kind of movement or outreach with other communities, we want to make sure that our, um, that we're all onboard with it to then uh, try to form that coalition with the other mayors um, in the William Penn School District and then to have their councils be onboard with the same ideas. Uh, so before we even move to that, uh, So before we even move to that, what is the feel, feeling on council?
Well, Mr. President, as mayor, I'd be glad to be involved with this. I was involved with No Place for Hate when I was on council and I take a lot of pride in that. The only thing I would say is it sounds kind of daunting. Obviously, I wouldn't want to take something on like that by myself. And I don't think anybody's proposing that, right? So the council feels comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with being involved with it. If I'm the one who has to start it off by signing up, I would be glad to do that again, as long as the, you know, council feels comfortable with moving on and helping out. That's fine with me.
Thank you, Mayor Campisano.
And as we go through this conversation, I just want to note that in the chat, I just posted the five initiatives. The six initiatives, I should say, that my brother's keeper would make us to take up. And, and they are, they do try to, you should try, you should plan to accomplish as many as you can. There isn't really pressure to do every single thing they listed because some of them, it would be challenging for a town our size to do. But it's still like a worthy cause. And so the six steps are in the chat if you're curious to know what those are as we're discussing.
Mr. Scott, should we read these into the record or can, is that?
Well, I mean, if the purpose is publicity, yes. I don't know that it's officially required, but if the idea is to spread the message.
I mean, they also, I don't think anybody here would disagree with any of the initiatives. I think the question is how we at the borough can accomplish it. I do know Upper Derby Township recently stated that they were going to become a member of it with the mayor and school board and chief of police all publicly stated they were in agreement with it. Again, we have the difficulty of being one smaller component of a larger district and don't face the, or don't have the same, I guess, ease of going into it that they might have in a larger township.
My only concern is Magna was saying that there's specific timetables. And if they're talking around two of the virus in the fall, then I don't know that we could meet the timetables. Would it be better to, I don't know, say this is something we would want to start in January so that it doesn't get mixed in with, we start it, it gets stopped if we have, have the second wave, everybody keeps talking about, because then we wouldn't be able to do the meetings and all of that. That's my only concern.
I actually agree. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ben.
No, that's okay.
But I actually agree with that because it is daunting to have those timelines there.
So I think the question now too is whether or not we, before we even get to that stage, we'd have to have the communication with the other, the mayors and council members of other communities to make sure that they're onboard with it as well. So for now, I think it's a question of, is there a consensus that we're fine with letting Magda go forth? Or we're committing, not just Magda, but each individually taking it up in committees and, and moving the ball forward to that step. So I think the charge then is for, if that's fine, I'm more than willing to take up the ends that I'd have to take up in economic development and also outreach to other council presidents and other communities. And similarly, if Councilmember Najee Taylor, if you're willing to take up the discussion in public safety of the involvements there, then you could take it to those ends.
Yes, I'm willing to do that. I do think that it does make sense to start in January. And would, would this be a joint effort in reference to the William Penn School District?
Yes, yes, yes.
Then I think it makes sense to start the plan, but plan to start in January.
Right. And similarly, taking to the other committees, because there's ideas in here for, I think, keeping youth remain safe from violent crime, not just involve public safety, but also parks interact with the recreational programming that we have. And so there's, I think each of our committees can move forward. So if we could all then, if we're all in agreement, put that as an agenda item in our committees. And then the next council, we could keep moving forward with it to then have that plan move forward with the idea of a January. Is that an agreement with that?
Mr. President, I'd be glad, I'm in agreement with it and I'd be glad to talk to the mayor. So I would take up that part.
I appreciate that, Mayor Campisano. Thank you.
I can cover school districts also if that helps.
Okay.
I have a decent relationship with ours and with our folks, so I think I get the word out.
Okay, great. So I think maybe even think about next council or maybe at the end of the summer, putting together some sort of resolution of formal communication with all those entities as well. That way we can be on record that that's what we're committing to. Okay, that is the last item on our new business. So I will open it up now to take a motion to suspend Robert's rules order and open up the meeting to public comment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I will ask any member of the public who'd like to participate in public comment to please unmute yourself and speak. Please do so for seven minutes or fewer. And please make sure that your comments are germane to issues affecting Lansdowne.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to address council and the public in general as myself tonight.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Michael Schley.
I have not felt comfortable the last couple of weeks, or I should say months at this point, of having my camera on during public meetings and letting people see into my home. But tonight, I feel it's important that people see my face and hear my voice. For the record and posterity, I ask apologies now if at any point this evening my words are intemperate, impolite, et cetera, as I speak from a place of trauma. I have not engaged in some of the public protests lately as I have small children, one of whom can't keep her hands off anything and the other one, quite frankly, doesn't know personal space to save her life, which in these trying times literally may save your life. So in my own little way, I've protested. I've spoken out on my own property about things that I think are wrong and just asked for simple things in five simple words. And right now, those have been the most expensive words I've ever printed in my life. I joined this community about 16 years ago. I lived in my current home for the last 13. And I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. We, as people of Lansdowne, have committed to a public covenant to be respectful of one another, be tolerant of other people's ideas and to treat our neighbors as such. And most recently, that covenant, whether by an outsider or someone else, was broken. When the only imagine, the only reason I can imagine someone would do it was because of how I protested. This past Friday, I was going out to support a local business by picking up dinner. And I got about 50 feet away from my driveway when I realized something was wrong with my car. I pulled over and realized I had a flat and didn't think much of it. I went to get my wife's keys so I could get dinner because I knew at nearly seven o'clock, now nearly 5:30 at night, I wasn't likely going to get the car fixed. And that wasn't the most immediate concern. So she gave me the keys and I went to go use her car, where I found that her car had multiple flats. Figuring this was not a coincidence, I called the police, reported it. And our very professional police officers came, examined the cars, took a report, examined the tires and said they weren't really sure what was going to happen or what caused this. And they helped me get my dinner, quite frankly. So I took the car back in the driveway, called on AAA, who came out, examined the tires, couldn't figure out what was wrong, but said maybe someone just let air out. So we refilled them. I said, well, how would I know whether it's damaged? They said, well, you should know in two hours. So as evening came, we went outside, inspected the tires again. Nothing really appeared wrong. So we went to about our usual business. The next morning, went out and checked them on again. All my wife's tires were flat. Mine somehow kept their air. Not knowing the difference, we decided to continue on with our regular plan to go out to the park for the first time in three months since all the craziness has happened. And on the way there, things just didn't feel right. It wasn't flat like it was the night before, but it didn't feel right. So I stopped at a service station, tried to see if I could get a mechanic to look at it. No one was available. Tried filling it with a little air, checking the tires myself and couldn't find anything wrong. Continued on the highway. Where it still just didn't feel right. So I pulled off the highway at the next exit, found the closest chain store that I could find that would deal with those things and had them inspect all the tires. Emphasizing the fact that all of my tire, my wife's tires had been flat and that I was concerned about vandalism. After sitting there for hours, they told me that they checked them all and they found that two of the tires were bad and I immediately had them replaced. And we continued on about two, three counties away on our ride to the park, enjoyed the day in the park and came home. The day after, I found that yet another one of my tires was flat. And by Monday, when we finally took my wife's car in, I asked them to check my tires again. And sure enough, they found that they'd been pierced on the side by ice picks. Now, some people may think that this type of vandalism is not a big deal. But when you take, as the owner of the vehicle, the reasonable steps to try and determine what's wrong and deal with them and not, people can, people can't find these minor defects that cause slow leaks that sometimes took four days to evaluate themselves. I was not, and my family was not safe driving on major highways with cars and wheels that could have exploded. If the pressure was wrong. I realized that the people of this town know that that's inappropriate. I realized that no one here would knowingly treat their neighbor that way. And more likely than not, this was a a reaction without thought. But this cannot continue. We cannot, as neighbors, treat ourselves this way. So I really hope it wasn't someone who lives among us. That being said, neighbors have brought this to the attention of others that this happened and people have pulled together funds to replace my tires. I greatly appreciate that. That is the love and warmth that I have grown accustomed to being a member of Lansdowne. And I really, really appreciate it. So does my wife. I hope this doesn't happen to anyone else. I hope everyone else doesn't fear to exercise their right to say simple words of how they feel about the current environment, current regimes. Because it's a fundamental right to express ourselves in peaceful, calm ways passively on our own property. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I appreciate the words. I appreciate the, your right to protest in Lansdowne and I, in the strongest possible way, I think, speak for all of us that we condemn acts of violence against property and acts of violence against our neighbors for speaking out and, and being willing to voice their opinions. So I'm sorry that that occurred. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council? Okay, here none. I will take a motion to re-institute Robert's rules of order.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. That was Councilmember James, I think, on the second.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So with that said, we'll move into the action items. Mr. Tataro, there should be a motion to adopt the Juneteenth resolution.
Yeah, I think I recall on Friday, we thought we would discuss first and if agreement, so we can just add that as
Okay.
Number five.
Yep, yep.
And that would be number 13. Is it, you have it open there? I think if Resolution 13.
It is 13.
Twenty twenty.
Yes. Okay, so first item then is Ms. James.
Motion to pay the bills for the period.
The, thank you. The bill has been moved and seconded. Any discussion about the bills? All right, all in favor to pay the bills for the period, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the second item then is to a motion to, I'm sorry, that's Ms. English. Ms. English, take it up.
Motion to accept the letter of resignation from Catherine Marksaw from the EAC.
Okay, if I could make one amendment to that, it should be S O L F on the name. So if you could make sure that's correct in the minutes. So it has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of accepting the letter of resignation of Catherine Marksaw, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the next item is mine. It is a motion to appoint Catherine Marksaw to the Planning Commission for a term expiring six seventeen, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. I just want to state that Ms. Marksaw did an excellent job working on the EA, the Environmental Advisory Council. We did interview Ms. Marksaw at the last Economic Development Committee meeting and she brings a lot of ideas and experience in engineering to the Planning Commission and I look forward to her work on it if so approved. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, next item then is mine as well, motion to execute a farmers market agreement amendment number two regarding barricades.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I hear you.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, Ms. Councilmember Najee Taylor says she can't hear. Is anybody else experienced?
Yes. I know, I see your mute is on, but that shouldn't play up.
Okay.
I heard that happen. I had to leave and rejoin.
Good.
I've heard it the whole time perfectly.
I heard you as well.
Me too.
Okay, if we could maybe lip read on this, this Taylor for the last items. That's not, that's not. That's not, that's not like, next item is, it's still not, I don't have it up here on the agenda. It's motion to adopt Juneteenth Resolution. That's Resolution 2020-013, I believe.
13, no zero.
No zero, 13, okay. So that is the motion on the four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And the motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I believe that is the end of our action items. So with that said, we do have some items for executive session. Would like to thank all the members of the public for coming out and also all of the, all of our staff members. Thank you for coming out. Mr. Mattson and Chief, I hope that you have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Chief.
Good night.
Good night, Kevin.
Good night.
Okay, are we all good? It's just council members now? We're still recording. Should we still be recording?
Hold on. We are just us and...
Okay, to all members of the public, we were just in an executive session discussing, discussing issues of personnel. At this time, we concluded our business. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn. I believe it is Councilmember Holt with the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is the council.
Goodbye, everybody.
Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Bye-bye.